Good. The meeting will come to order. The time is now four oh one on Monday, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. This is a regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Commission on the Arts and Humanities. My name is Reggie Van Lee, Chairperson of the Commission. I will now call the roll. When you hear your name, please answer present. Stacy Banks. Stacy?
Present. Can you hear me?
Yes, we heard you. Thank you. Cora Masses Berry. Maggie Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Quanise Floyd. Rona Wolf Beadman.
Here.
Alma Gates. Alma? I see you, so. Natalie Hopkinson. Kimber Mckeady.
Present.
Mary Ann Miller. Mariah Rooney.
Present.
Cece? Carla? Hector.
Here, present.
Jose.
Present.
Gretchen.
Present.
Derek. And myself.
I'm here.
Who's that?
Cora Berry.
Oh, thank you, Cora.
I can't stay long, but I just dropped in for a second.
Thank you, thank you. At Quorum is present, this is a meeting of a public body held in open session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, D.C. Law eighteen dash three five oh, D.C. Official Code two dash five seven one and two dash five eight zero. The meeting is being conducted remotely using the Cisco Webex Virtual Meeting Platform and is being livestreamed to the Commission's YouTube channel. As electronic, an electronic recording of the meeting will be available for viewing online following the conclusion of the meeting. November is National Native American Heritage Month, which makes this, this land acknowledgement that I'm about to read even more poignant and profound. I'll read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contribute their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will, some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life, and some have lived in this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Nakachtenk and Piscataway people. We pay res- respects to their elders, past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths as any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this arts commission. The agenda for this meeting was previously circulated. Is there any objection to the agenda?
No.
Here, no objection. The agenda stands as adopted. Next is the approval of the act two thousand twenty-one meeting minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Here, no corrections. The minute stand as approved. Normally, I would go on and on with welcome. My current musings, but we have a very full agenda, so I'll just say welcome to everyone. Thank you for coming. We are having a great month already, and I think you'll see that through the results that are come through the various committee meetings. So why don't we first start with some, a public comment? Ms. Ebony Rose Thompson, Ward Seven Representative, D.C. State Board of Education, would like to make a comment. Ms. Thompson, are you here?
I am here.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. My name is Ebony Rose Thompson, and I'm humbled to represent Ward Seven on the State Board of Education. I reached out with the following email to the Commission, I believe it was back in October, regarding an opportunity to use public art to increase public safety for the most vulnerable members of our community, our children. On the same day, it's the mayor's announcement a few weeks ago to accelerate pedestrian safety projects to improve traffic safety. I saw what was actually a beautiful crosswalk project implemented by the Houston C dot equivalent, Houston City D dot equivalent, which I'm hoping can be adopted here in D.C., beginning in Ward Seven. I believe this sighting was serendipitous. I wrote to propose that the D.C. Commission on Arts and Humanities develop a Ward Seven pilot creating permanent public artwork that enhances the safety and beauty of our school communities. This initiative would turn crosswalks into public art that would showcase school pride and culture while forcing motorists, like myself, who speed at times, to pay attention and slow down in school zones. In Ward Seven, we have a number of schools that sit on major thoroughfares. Every thoroughfare we have in Seven has a school sitting directly on it. As a result, we need traffic calming measures. I see this as an opportunity to have a bright and colorful campaign to encourage student safety. My ward leads the pack in traffic fatalities and is home to several of the most dangerous intersections in the city. It also lags the city in art programs and public installations. I see this as an opportunity to take a, take a step forward toward remedying both. I look forward to working with the Commission to make this pilot a reality. And I'm happy to share that since sending this email, I've both had the opportunity to go back to Burville with D dot on a walkthrough and corresponded with Lauren Glover of your staff to discuss the potential for making this project a reality. And I wanted to come today to just say thank you for the progress and also offer the opportunity to answer any questions you all might have. Ward Seven is, when I say home to me, it's home to me. I walked to school in Ward Seven as a kid. My neighborhood school for pre-K through fifth grade is my neighborhood school now. It's, it is the place not only that I call home, but that I choose to be in. And so I'm really looking forward to working with the Commission to make it a better place for kids who walk to school just like I did. And I thank you for this time to share in front of you today.
Great, thank you. And I know that this issue has come before the members of our Public Arts Committee, and as you said, Lauren Glover has engaged in this topic as well. I wonder, are there any questions or comments from any of the commissioners on this topic, in particular, Maggie from the Chair of the Public Arts Committee, or anyone else?
Thank you, Chairman Van Lee, and also thank you for coming forward today and being so passionate about the safety of our children in the District of Columbia. We are really excited to work with the Department of Transportation and, and other agencies within the district to try to advance this work and bring it to fruition. I know that Lauren is on the call, and she and I are working on a project plan to make sure that we continue to push this along. We're very, very excited about it, and we agree that there's an opportunity here to, to lead and to increase safety for our kids. So let me just pause for a moment and just offer the floor to Lauren to see if there's anything else that she'd like to add.
Oh, well, thank you, Maggie, and thank you for, for coming and speaking to us today, as Maggie mentioned. And we have been in conversations with D dot, very lengthy conversations with D dot. And what we're doing now, as I'm sure you're, you're aware from your walkthrough, just mapping out, and D dot is mapping out locations. So we have every intention to, to support this effort. And we actually have a program that we already do with D dot called Color the Curve, which is very similar to the Houston program. But first and foremost is the safety of our young people. And so D dot needs to do what it needs to do to make sure immediately that children are safe and people are safe walking to and from school. And we will support them in that effort. But the leadership in terms of deciding on where these places will go is, is in D dot's court. And we're in, you know, constant communication with them.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Thompson. Thank you for your leadership here, and as you see, we are engaged in this, and we will try to make the right things happen. So thank you very much. I'm going to move on to the Director's Report. Haron?
Thank you, Chair Van Lee. Good afternoon, everybody. I will do a quick, maybe verbal presentation of the report. I know all of you have it in hand. The, the first good thing, excellent thing that happened in October was our, our first of the year TeleTown Hall on October twenty-eighth. I know many of you were on the call with us. Our Chair, Reggie Van Lee, presented his vision of the Commission and sort of the three pillars guiding the work forward. And I presented on some of the highlights of the year before fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. We had a really robust presence of, of attendance. We, we had about two hundred attendees and a very, you know, robust discussion after in the Q and A with a lot of good ideas coming from the community. And the interaction was really, was really exciting for us both. We will possibly be doing a couple more of these TeleTown Halls. It's a good, obviously a good, a good opportunity to connect with the community, to, you know, sort of have a listening tour of sorts of, of ideas that are out there and to invite the partnership of our community members in the work that we're doing. So that was an exciting outcome and a good program. The, also on October first, as our new fiscal year launched, we pushed out a number of grand awa- grant award notifications. Right now, we have about seven hundred and twenty-four notifications out there. Folks are, grantees are getting their paperwork together. We are extremely sort of working across the agency to get the folders in shape and sign off on the, and execute the agreements. From there, it moves into a payment process. We begin to establish requisitions and, and purchase orders for these grants, and we're making really steady progress. So it's exciting to report that we're almost at the, at the halfway mark, six weeks into the new year, the new fiscal year. Moving on, in terms of our inclusion, diversity, equity, and access work, I know commissioners have been attending or may have finished attending the three sessions that the National Assembly of State Arts Agencies put together for anti-bias training. Myself and David have attended three similar trainings, and CAH staff will, will begin to do that at the end of November, early December. So this is, this is really good in that it's, it fulfills a key recommendation of the Task Force on Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. We're well on our way to, to getting, not that this is the only training, but at least getting one good round of training for everyone underway. The last-
If I could just interrupt here, Haron, and put in a plug. So to my fellow commissioners, thank you for those who attended the first session. The second session is tomorrow. So I'm looking forward to full attendance from our commissioners tomorrow as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And the last section of my report has to do with work that we've been involved in beyond grant making. A couple of these are regional and local studies on economic impacts of the arts through nonprofit and cultural organizations and audience economic activity. So the first one is, is one that the Americans for the Arts does every so often. I don't think it's annual, but they're doing their sixth Arts and Economic Prosperity Study, and we're a local partner for this. And, and there will be some really good sort of reporting generated from that, that, that will guide our grant making and our policy, hopefully. The, the Americans for the Arts has, has made equity and inclusion a critical component of their methodology this year. And, and they're, they're centering it in their organizational participation, their, their data collection, and their communication strategy. This is sort of a longer term study. It'll be completed in June of two thousand twenty-three. So, and we will be a partner in getting some of the surveys out through our grantees in, in the process in the next year or so. We're also commissioning an arts impact study of our own. We are beginning to finalize the last of the soliciting process for a research firm to study the, the economic and social impact of the pandemic specifically and its effects on, on the district's arts and cultural sector. Again, another opportunity to really galvanize, you know, the research and, and have it have some bearing on, on our grant making activity and policies. The researchers will present us with short and long-term recommendations and on how we can best support the recovery of the sector and the resilience of this, of the, of the sector based on the analysis of, of the data that they do. The last piece is something that we have been charged with to get going, which is the, the city's cultural plan. Last year, during our performance hearing at the Committee of the Whole, the recommendation we received was that CAH work with the Office of Planning to assemble and facilitate a steering committee, a cultural planning steering committee, which is what is required to move the cultural plan legislation forward. And so this committee will review all of the recommendations made in the cultural plan and work with the council and with the mayor to best determine how to implement the recommendations. I know Chairman Van Lee, this may be something of, of interest to you as it aligns with one of the pillars of working closely with both the Executive Office of the Mayor and the D.C. Council. So this is, I think, where we can have an impact, is to begin to work on assembling the steering committee and moving this plan forward. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Good progress. Thank you. Before we move on to the Finance Committee, I want to re-welcome four of our commissioners who are officially with us now, fully reappointed, Kimber, Cora, Gretchen, and Natalie. So welcome back, though you never left, but we were delighted that you're here officially. And with that, I'll introduce Kimber to take us through the Finance Report with Brian, assistance from Brian. Kimber?
Thank you. It's good to be officially back. So I'm gonna pass off my time to Brian to give us an update sort of on where we ended two thousand twenty-one and where we're kicking off two thousand twenty-two. And then the Finance Committee will be meeting early next week to really dig all the way into two thousand twenty-two and make sure that the committee has a full understanding of the full, of the full budget. So Brian, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Kimber, and as well, congratulations to all the four that were reconfirmed.
Brian, perhaps you could get closer to the speaker or speak up a little more?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's much better. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
So I guess we'll move right into the Finance Reports. With regards to the fu- the budget, the agency is still closing out the fiscal year twenty-one budget, but at the present time, the balance that's going to go to the fund balance and then ultimately be used in, in future years would be four million dollars, four, four point six million dollars. Part of the reasons for that amount of funding is due to vacancies that was within the agency. We had, we ended the year with approximately six vacancies and, as well as some of the contracts that started later than, in the year than anticipated. We also had some grant funding that was left over as well. Questions? No questions, then we can move right into twenty-two, with fiscal year twenty-two. As you can see, twenty-one's budget started, I mean, ended with thirty-eight million dollars. In, in fiscal year twenty-two, we look again to be around thirty-eight point seven million dollars. That is the total amount. Are we on twenty-two's budget? Yes. Thirty-eight point three six seven, one forty-four. As Haron just stated, we have already begun the process of encumbering and funding for the seven hundred and twenty-four grants that are, that the notices have already been sent out. There are a couple of other programs that will come online at a little, at a later date. But to date, we have a hundred and fifty-seven grants that have been established, and that's totaling like six, six million dollars. I'm sorry, it looks like they were the chat question. Yes, and so Quanise Floyd asked, will the extra funds from last year roll over? Where, yes, the district, I mean, CAH's funding is non-reverting, non-lapsing. What that means is whatever balances that we have at the end of fiscal year, they go into an agency fund at the end of the year, once it's certified through the CAFRA report, the annual report, then the funding, the, the balances would be available for use in future years.
And Brian, just to clarify, those percentages of how that is allocated are the same, right? It's the same methodology that we use for the percentages of our, our budget on a regular?
The percentages go as, when you, when you're using funding from the fund balance, it really depends on how the agency chooses to use it, meaning in conjunction with the commissioners. But I can tell you what the law states. The law states that it can be no less than seventy-eight percent going to grants and no more than twenty-two percent going to the administrative portion of the budget. But we can conceivably not use those prescribed percentages and, and use a larger percentage towards grants.
Hi, Brian, Brian, I, I don't understand. Can you clarify that briefly?
Okay, so if the, let's just say the, the actual budget for this year is thirty-eight million dollars, thirty-eight point three million dollars. Three point seven of that went towards admin. If you took in a percentage, that would be twenty percent of the total budget. The remaining budget went to, as you can see, it's a thirty point six million dollars or thirty point seven million dollars that actually went to grants. So that would equate to eighty percent. So as I stated, the law states that it can be no more than twenty-two percent, no more than twenty-two percent. So in this particular instance, we use twenty percent for the admin section of the budget.
In other words, we, we have been overproductive. We have spent less on non-grants than was prescribed by the law and therefore were able to give more to grants than even was required by the legislation. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Thanks for that clarification, Brian.
Thank you.
And Brian, there, there are a couple of questions in the chat that I'm not sure if you're seeing.
Yes, sir.
One for Quanise, the extra funds from this, from last fiscal year, do the extra funds from last fiscal year roll over? And then would there be any future issues with the city or mayor's office if there's a significant amount of money not being used?
So the, I, I think Haron might want to take that, address that question. But to answer it from a technical perspective, the only way that any funds that we have in the fund balance are at jeopardy in any ways would be should the mayor and the council pass legislation that would sweep agency fund balances, and it wouldn't just be CAH. It would be as a result of an economic situation citywide. And so it would go to any agency that had a designated fund balance such as ours. Did I answer that question for you, Quanise?
And I see that's the same answer Haron gave in the chat as well, so. Consistent truth. We like it. We like it. Good. Other questions on this point before Brian continues? Continue, Brian.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, I'm at the, the end of that particular presentation for twenty-two. Are there any additional questions at this point?
I, I am going to propose something. I know, Brian, that you and Kimber and the Finance Committee plan to get together and do a deeper dive around issues. And I know that oftentimes there are questions that commissioners may have, but it's difficult to ask in open forum or we have time constraints, et cetera. So I'm gonna ask, once the Finance Committee has gone through and really understands the details of this budget, that we would deploy at least one Finance Committee member and you to each of the other committee meetings, so that in those committee meetings, those commissioners, if they have deeper questions that they want answered, they can get those addressed. And therefore, we won't take up the time here, but we could do that in those committees. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Haron is, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't ask you this before. Is that okay, Haron?
You're saying, I think that's a good idea.
Good, great. But if there are any other burning issues, committee commissioner now, questions, we certainly want to cover them. Good. Well, thank you, Brian, and thank you, Kimber. Good. And let's move on to the Grants Committee. Gretchen and David?
Honey, I was just about to type in the chat, but I didn't finish. And grants can always use more money. We need relief funds. So anything anybody's got left over, bring it our way. We'll figure out how to give it away. Okay, can we have the first lift-off slide? Okay, this is lift-off. This is actually the last grant that we will be presenting for FY twenty-two. When we finish this one, we'll be starting on FY twenty-three's work, which is a lot because we're going to be doing a grants revamp. You probably heard about that, but it's real. The lift-off grant that we are presenting today for approval by the commissioners is a grant program that provides capacity building support to establish D.C.-based arts and humanities nonprofit organizations that face operational and infrastructure challenges that inhibit organizational and program sustainability. It literally, that's why we call it lift-off, trying to solidify these organizations, make them stronger. The grant program goals are to provide funding to support infrastructure growth within the District of Columbia nonprofit arts and humanities organizations, cultivate a robust professional development experience among lift-off participants to foster new partnerships, collaborations, and shared resources, prepare leaders of small arts and humanities nonprofits to build organizational capacity. That's a real heavy with us this year, organizational capacity, and building it. Promote cultural diverse, distinctive, and dynamic expression through the arts and humanities for all D.C. residents. The program staff and the consultants, and the consultants are consultants that are contracted by CAH, they work closely with the organizational leaders from each of the participating organizations to build on their existing organizational infrastructure. Leaders, and there can be possibly up to twenty, receive combination of technical assistance and in-person learning sessions. We've gotten great feedback over the years from this program. And thanks to Khalid, I see his face is there. He's our program, grants program manager for this particular grant. The goal of these forums is to provide leaders with robust opportunities and resources aimed at strengthening their organizational infrastructures. Lift-off took place in FY twenty because of so many other, because of COVID. It was not the only program, but it was definitely put on hiatus for FY twenty-one. The program spanned a six-month period, but we, of course, got lots of feedback because when you're trying to help an organization and you're trying to help them grow capacity, it takes longer than six months. So the FY twenty-two program will span two years. And we've been told that that is a good length of time to really put your feet in and help the organization sustain and put plans in place. Let's see, the program's open to organizations that have previously been funded by CAH, excuse me, in the FY twenty cycle, twenty-one cycle was, we was put on hiatus then. And FY, I'm gonna skip over some of this a little bit. In FY nineteen, there were thirty-two applicants, eighteen recipients, three hundred and twenty dol- three hundred and twenty thousand dollars was awarded. And FY twenty, we had twenty-eight applications and twenty recipients with three hundred thousand dollars awarded. And FY twenty-one, we gave no awards. FY twenty-two, we have two different scenarios that were presented to the Grants Committee. One was with twelve recipients funded at a hundred percent of the request. One was with fourteen recipients funded at a hundred percent of the request. The other scenario was twelve recipients funding based on requested amount with their scores as a factor. And we had a lot of discussion around this, and we all agreed, as we have for most of our grants, that it really, the, the score and how the organization scores in front, in front of our panel makes a big, big difference in terms of whether or not we really think they can use the money and achieve what they are requesting it for. Request amounts are based on the scope of work as determined by the consultants in conjunction with the CAH staff. Award amounts are based on raw scores times a request amount with the top-scoring applicants receiving a hundred percent of their request amount. We had one panel, as I said, Khalid Randolph is our grants manager. Thank you so much. And the convening commissioner was Alma Gates. The award justification and allocation of funds, we were presented with two scenarios, and we chose the broader one. You know, we always talk about the depth and the breadth, but we want to give more people more money. They make it a less, a little less than if we had funded fewer people, but at least we're funding more people. So what we're going to suggest and recommend to the Commission for a vote is that we go with scenario B two. I'm not sure you can see that here. Can we? Okay. The Grants Committee recommends the adoption of the following resolution. And by the way, the entire Grants Committee was present and did vote unanimously on this particular, this particular, excuse me, this scenario. Resolve that the commission agreed to the proposed funding scenario B two as presented by the FY twenty-twenty-two lift-off grant, awarding grants to fourteen organizations for combined total funding of two hundred and eighty-three thousand, a hundred and eighty-five dollars.
So, so before we move into this quickly, I sat through the process, so I think I understand it, but to some others, it may still, there may still be questions. In summary, everyone who applied for a lift-off grant is getting a lift-off grant, is that correct?
No, we, we went through the, um, we went down in order to make it more in-depth or broader. Instead of, um, we had a total of, um, what was it, sixteen? And we decided to cut off the, um, variance at three, which meant the lost, lowest score would be sixty-nine point, sixty-eight point five zero. I'm not sure you'll be able to see, uh, there we go. You may have to expand this a little bit. Roll it up a teeny bit. Whoops, not that much. Uh, yeah, roll it up. Yeah, so we can see the bottom. So in scenario, we can't see scenario B though. That's the difference. We went down to more people, so we are able to increase the number of people that we are awarding. Khalid, would you like to comment on this? May have to scroll it over to the right a teeny bit. Okay, thank you. Whoops, right there.
Gretchen, you did a, you've done a perfect job. Uh, there's nothing I would add. I would repeat everything you said. Great job.
Coming from you. Thank you. Because Khalid's really into his grants here.
Reggie, I have a question. Can I?
Yes, of course.
Okay, um, you had sixteen total applicants, is that right?
Yes.
Yes. So you're saying you're funding, I'm just looking at your green chart, funding how many, fourteen out of the sixteen?
Yes.
And how, how much, what was the discrepancy in scores between the two you added and the, and the, and the others?
It's, it's that second, that second column on the left that shows, you know, the bottom one, it was scored fifty-eight. The one above that was what, sixty? And then the one above that was sixty-five.
Okay, okay.
So.
Fourth column on the left.
Exactly. I just wanted everyone to understand the process. So as opposed to everybody who applied, those people that were qualified by virtue of the scores that came from the panel got money. And the amount of money they got was based on the amount they requested that then was factored by how they scored. So a person got more of their request and the lower score person got a percentage of their request. I just wanted the commissioners to understand that's the process. So this is very merit-based. This is not just because you applied, you got an award. And not just because you scored okay, you got a maximum amount. You got an amount commensurate with your score and your merit. Is that fair to say Khalid and Gretchen and Alma?
Yes, yes.
Good. I think it's important that we understand that, that, you know, we want to make sure that these things are based on merit. And this is the process we put in place here.
Yeah, I mean, it's easy enough to give everyone a grant or the same amount of money, but the panelists really, really get into the applications and talk to each other, talk to the other panelists to see how meritorious the application is. And on that, we have to factor.
Moreover, the panelists spent a day or however long going through this, so for their scores to not be taken into account wouldn't make sense. So this is our taking into account the hard work of the panels and our comfort. And Alma, you can speak on your comfort with the, the panelists, that they do their work well. And if they did their work well, we should abide by their work. So, so your assessment is they did a good job, Alma? We can't hear you. We still can't hear you. You can give us a thumbs up if you think they did a good job. Good. Thank you, thank you. Good. So I didn't mean to belabor Gretchen. I thought it's important for us to understand the process we're using. That is a merit-based process.
Right, and that's.
She takes the input from the panel and uses it seriously.
Yeah, and that's the process we use for all of the grants. This is not a one-off.
Right. So this is just consistent with what we've done with the other grants.
Absolutely.
Good. So sorry to take you off your agenda.
Um, there were no more questions.
If there are no more questions, you need someone to put forth the resolution and then we vote, is that correct?
Yeah, and I read the resolution. Do you want me to read it again?
Could you read it again?
Sure. Um, that the commission agreed to the proposed funding scenario, which is B three, as presented for the FY twenty-two lift-off grant, awarding grants to fourteen organizations for combined total funding of two hundred and eighty-three thousand, a hundred and eighty-five dollars.
There are no other. Sorry.
Lose control of those.
Second.
Thank you. And I go person by person. Stacy?
Yes.
Cora? Maggie?
Yes.
Quanis?
Yes.
Rona? Alma? Give us a thumbs up, Alma. Oh, good. Thank you. Um, Natalie? Kimber?
Yes.
Mary Ann? Mariah?
Yes.
Cece? Carla? Hector?
Yes.
Jose? Gretchen?
Yes.
Derek? Was that a yes from Derek? Okay, good. So thank you, thank you. So it passes. Anything else Gretchen from grants?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Let's move on to Public Arts Committee, Maggie and Lauren.
Okay, well, I have several items that we're covering today. I'm going to turn it to Lauren, um, to lead us through it. Lauren?
Okay, thank you. Um, and I'm going to pivot again. I'm going to ask Sarah Gordon, who's our curator, to walk through the Art Bank program. And I just, for everyone's refreshment of this, this is not, um, a typical grant adjudication. It's not one and done. These volunteer panelists participated in three meetings, um, to come up with this wonderful slate. So with that, I am turning it over to Sarah.
Good afternoon, everybody. Great to see you. Um, I am happy to present the funding recommendations for the FY twenty-two Art Bank program. The grant program is in support of local visual artists, district art galleries, and district art nonprofits. Um, through this grant, CH acquires fine art from metropolitan artists to grow the Art Bank collection. Once artwork comes into the collection, we manage it and we loan it out to district government agencies for display in public areas and offices of government buildings. So we have one cycle per year. Did I hear a question? Okay, we have one cycle per year. Um, the amount that we are recommending this year is very much in line with the past couple of years. Uh, so we're recommending two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars. Last year it was just a thousand. More than that, the year prior, it was a little bit higher at twenty, uh, two hundred and ninety thousand. We had two panels that adjudicated this grant this year. Um, can you scroll down a bit, Patrick? Thank you. And I want to give a big thanks to Commissioners Fitzpatrick, Torres, and Uklas for convening the two panels. Um, they were, they were really thorough, um, very robust panels. And I am going to give you some details on how those panels went and sort of how the adjudication of this grant moves along, because as Lauren said, it's a little bit unusual. Um, first of all, every eligible application was reviewed and scored in an online review on a scale of one to ten. We received a hundred and forty-eight applications. And this included a hundred and forty-one individuals and seven organizational applications. Within each application, an individual can submit up to five artworks. And an organization can submit up to ten works by at least two different artists. So in total, we reviewed six hundred and ninety-five artworks, which is a little bit, um, mind-boggling, I have to say. Of those, the top-scoring one hundred and thirty-one artworks were brought in, um, for a final onsite round of review. This was, um, this represented work by eighty-seven different artists. Um, it was seventy-six individual applicants plus four organizational applicants. And again, the organizations represent more than one artist per organization. So during the in-person round of review, panelists are able to come into the galleries. Um, they see the artwork in person. They can judge the quality, the visual impact, and also detect any potential conservation issues. So panelists came in in person and kind of staggered, um, times for just comfort and, um, social distance. And then we met online to discuss those, um, scores. So of the hundred and thirty-one artworks that came in as finalists, we are recommending seventy-five artworks by sixty-five artists be acquired. This represents fifty-six individual applicants and four organizational applicants. Um, twenty-nine of those seventy-five artists, I'm sorry, twenty-nine of the sixty-five artists will be new to the Art Bank collection. Um, and I'll just highlight that. That's about, um, almost fifty percent of the artists who are bringing in this year would be new to the collection. Uh, and the total amount that we are recommending is two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-one. Can you scroll down a little bit more, Patrick? Thank you. So there is a resolution and there are also a few more statistics. Um, Lauren and Maggie, I don't know if you want to say, if you want me to say more about those statistics or if you want to move right into the resolution.
Um, Chairman, I'm comfortable moving into the resolution since these were shared. Um, if you're comfortable with proceeding.
I am too, unless there are any other questions or comments from any of the commissioners? If not, we can move right into the resolution.
Take the motion.
Okay, so let me read the resolution. Resolve that the commission agreed to the recommendations of seventy-five works of art for FY two thousand twenty-two Art Bank program as presented for a total amount of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Stacy?
Stacy?
Yes, yes.
Cora? Maggie?
Yes.
Quanis?
Yes.
Rona?
Yes.
Alma?
Yes.
Oh, we heard you. Great. Uh, Natalie?
My microphone turned off. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Natalie? Kimber?
Yes.
Mary Ann? Mariah? Mariah? She was here earlier. Cece, I think you're on the phone?
Yes.
Carla? Hector?
Yes.
Jose?
Yeah, yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Derek? It passes. Thank you, thank you. And I think I've made us a little late because we do have a, a couple of other things to cover on the agenda. Anything else in public art?
Just would like to say, Chairman Benly, that the works in the collection of the, the Art Bank are exquisite and they represent the best of our community. And I really encourage, uh, the other commissioners to get to know the Art Bank and the works within the Art Bank. Because it really is a celebration of the vast amount of talent across our city. And I know I was blown away by what I saw at the installation and I congratulate both Lauren and Sarah for their good work in bringing it to us. So thank you for that to the team.
Thank you, thank you.
I have a question. Can I ask a question?
Of course, please.
Maggie, um, do you have any plans to open this up more to the public so the public can come in, not just the commissioners, to learn about Art Bank and see it and perhaps learn the names and contacts of the artists? So they can contact them if they like their works?
Yeah, I think, I think this, uh, I will let Lauren speak this as well, but I can just say, Cora, first of all, thank you for your question and, and I, I believe strongly that as we build out a more extensive and robust communication and engagement plan, that there are all kinds of opportunities to use social media and other channels to highlight works of art and to highlight some of our district artists. Um, because there is a wealth of material and content that we have. And so I'm very eager to work with Commissioner Benly and others as part of the communications team to try to find ways to do that. There is an installation that was in the district building, um, and I know that there were precautions made for COVID. But I know members of the public could see the work, um, and, and experience it. But I do think we could do an even better job of telling people about it.
Thank you.
I thought, I thought Haran had sent a notice that the exhibit is being extended. And I think that note goes to the public because they pretty much can walk around and there are signs about keeping a mask and keeping their safe distance. So I think it is technically open to the public and is passed, and I'm sure will continue, will continue. There's always been the exhibits open to the public and there's normally, because of Khalid, we have not had, having a, we have not had a little get-together, but there normally is a, um, an opening reception where the chair speaks and, and our director. So, but I think it is open and Haran can correct me if I'm wrong.
No, Jose, what I was referring to is the public in general getting to see many works in Art Banks, not just the ones we choose to put out for, for a certain period of time. I just think we have so much more, um, things we can do for the public. And can they look at it virtually? Can they see it, you know?
There is.
Perhaps I could respond, um, Rona, that might help. So what's currently there are the round of finalists. Those works that were not framed are online virtually. Because we now have this virtual gallery, um, anytime we do anything, um, in the gallery, the virtual gallery is available. Every single artwork that is a part of our collection is currently online through our website, through the e-museum. And to Maggie's point, yes, we, um, are fully on board and engaged with building out, you know, marketing and communication messaging to welcome the public to explore deeply all of the works that are part of the collection. So you don't have to go into a district building to see it. You can come and see it on the e-museum if you want to do it that way. But certainly, you know, we can also, you can also see it at various, uh, district offices. Um, so hopefully that it, it's a little bit of everything. And so we're taking all of this in and we can, we want to push as much of it out because we're very proud of what we have. And, uh, so it's, it's a little bit of everything happening and with the, the, you know, more, I guess, resources to, to communicate it out to the public and how to see it, um, we can do that as well.
And are you going to make the artist's contact information available? I think that's critical. So if somebody.
We can explore what, what can be done, um, in, in, in that regard. We'd have to obviously work with the artists to see how they would want that to be handled. But, you know, as I said, no idea is a bad idea. So we just need to explore ways that we can make it happen.
I do think there's a wonderful opportunity here and I, I appreciate your suggestion, Rona. So thank you for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think the good news is everything that has been mentioned is in play. It's all in play. The challenge is still not enough people know about it. So as some of you know, there's an ad hoc committee that's been put together around communications. There's an ability and an interest in getting some additional support on board to help us with that. Because there's too much good work that this commission does that's still not enough people know about. And so we've got to find, it is not from lack of effort. It's not as though we haven't communicated and everything's on social media, but evidently that has not been sufficient because there's still too many people that don't know about this great work. So we are hoping to put in place in the next couple of months, a real aggressive effort around marketing and PR. So that more people can know what's being done by this commission. Anything else on public arts?
That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Lauren, as well. Uh, is there any new business? If there is no new business.
Uh, yes, me.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, it's Gretchen. It's not really new business. It's an addendum to the grants business that Haran reminded me when I said that this was our last grant we were presenting. Not true. We will be presenting our relief grants before the end of the year.
Good, good. And when do we think we'll do that? Before the end of the calendar year?
Yeah.
It, it'll be throughout the year.
It, it'll be throughout the year. Yeah, I mean, there will be something in December and then some other pieces in the winter and the spring. Yeah.
Yep.
Great, great. Good. So thank you. Any other new business? Uh, let's go on to Ethics Act Training. We have Asia Stewart Mitchell from the Supervisory Attorney with the Board of Ethics and Government Accountability, who will present a training on the Ethics Act.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, can everybody hear me okay? Could you just do a thumbs up or nod or if you can hear me? Okay, great, great. Um, thanks for having me on. I'm going to do your ethics training this evening. Um, I'm going to shoot to have the training done in about thirty minutes. Um, feel free to ask questions, but just be mindful that, um, the more questions you ask and the longer our discussions go, the longer the training is. So I don't know if there's a polite way to encourage you to hold your questions until the end, but that would be my suggestion. Write them down maybe. Um, and then I will do a few minutes of answering questions at the end. Um, let me go ahead and share my screen so we can get started. Okay, can I just get another thumbs up or, or nod or anything to indicate you can see that? Everybody can see that? All right. All right, let's get started and I will try to get through it as quickly as I possibly can and then, um, have a decent amount of time to answer your questions. All right, um, uh, I appreciate the introduction. Again, my name is Asia Stewart Mitchell. I'm a supervisory attorney, um, with the Board of Ethics and Government Accountability. Um, at Vega, we do a bunch of things. Um, two of the positive and good and fun things that we do is ethics training. Um, we do trainings like this one. We do specialized training. We can do, uh, Hatch Act training, gifts training. We do full ethics trainings. Um, we can customize based on the needs of an agency or a commission or a board. Uh, we also do advice. We do informal advice, informal advice. If you can call us up or email us if you have an ethics question and we'll answer. You can also request that we issue a formal advisory opinion on an issue. Um, and we, it would take us about four weeks to write that and then that would be published on our website. Um, some of the not-so-fun things that we do, um, are investigations and enforcement. Um, unfortunately, um, if they receive allegations that the code of conduct was violated, we can launch an investigation, investigate that matter and then at the end of that matter, um, reach some sort of disposition. It's usually going to involve some sort of monetary penalty. That's one of our, um, the only tools in our toolkit, if you will. We're not, we're not a law enforcement entity, um, so you face civil penalties. Um, one of the other things with regard to enforcement is that oftentimes, um, any disposition that we reach would be public, um, which can be embarrassing for some people. Most folks don't like it and it will be memorialized forever on our website. All right, a little about the sanctions and penalties you face, uh, if you violate the code of conduct, you face censure, um, and that's us publicly, um, essentially censoring you, reprimanding you for unethical conduct if we reach a disposition and conclude that you did violate the code of conduct. You face admonition and the difference between censure and admonition in our agency is censure is public and admonition is confidential. Um, if we determine that you, there was some sort of one-time ethical lapse or some sort of small, low-level ethical lapse, we'd, um, we'd issue an admonition and that's just us writing a letter directly to you saying, hey, you violated the code of conduct, please don't do that anymore. And then we'll require you to get ethics training within six months of receipt of the letter. Um, and that would not be made public. We would close out that entire case without making it public. Censure, of course, it would be on the website made public. Um, there are some remediation things that we can do with regard to recouping money lost by, um, the district, uh, requiring somebody to pay, um, in the amount that we determined that they damaged the district or took from the district. Um, there are probationary periods, but those would usually be handled within the agency. For boards and commissions, I've, I've not seen a probationary period with directly stemming from an ethics violation. Um, but presumably it is possible as one of our powers. Um, and then the, the big coon is fines up to five thousand dollars per violation. Important to keep in mind, um, you know, if we're, uh, investigating a, a certain set of circumstances, um, you may have, I don't know, taken a bribe, right? And the, but throughout the course of our investigation, we gather information about several different actions that you took. Um, each action that you take in the course of receiving this bribe could potentially be a separate violation. And so you could end up, um, facing five thousand dollars per violation. If we determine that you took four actions that violated the code of conduct, you could be facing fines up to twenty thousand dollars. Um, so it can get really serious, um, depending on what has happened. All right, um, this is just a little overview of the ethical standards that apply to the boards and commissions. It's essentially our body of rules. These are the, um, the different bodies of rules that we, um, interpret and enforce for the district. Um, it's the Ethics Act, the Conflict of Interest Provision, the District Personnel Manual, which does apply to boards, uh, board members and commissioners. Um, there are a couple, um, exceptions, but, uh, board members and commissioners are considered special government employees because you generally would serve less than a hundred and thirty days in a calendar year. Um, but the, the, uh, chapter eighteen, the District Personnel, uh, Manual does apply to you. Um, we, uh, manage the financial disclosure, uh, process for the district. We interpret and do enforcement with regard to local Hatch Acts. And it's also important to note that several of our roles have, um, federal criminal counterparts. And so while you might simultaneously face civil, civil penalties from our agency, you may face, um, some criminal penalties on the federal level, uh, which could include jail time. All right, um, your commission is considered, uh, a two-E board. That's what we call them in the agency, uh, which basically means it was created under section two E of the Confirmation Act. Um, and so all commissioners are, uh, subject to the Local Hatch Act, um, and all of its prohibitions. All right, uh, with that being said, let's talk a little bit about the Local Hatch Act. The Local Hatch Act, uh, defines political activity as any activity that is regulated by the district and directed toward the success or failure of a political party, candidate for partisan political office, partisan political group, ballot initiative, or referendum. When engaging in political activity, uh, that is regulated by the district, and that's one of the important pieces of the Local Hatch Act, um, anything that would be determined or regulated by the DC Board of Elections is going to be regulated by the district and it's going to fall under the Local Hatch Act. Um, when engaging in political activity, government employees cannot knowingly solicit except receive, uh, political contributions from any person. That's important to note. Fundraising is prohibited. Um, even if, you know, if you're at a meet and greet for some sort of political candidate and you see it turning into a fundraiser, somebody wants to hand you a check or something like that, you need to get out of there. Don't touch any checks. Don't collect money. Don't do anything like that for a partisan political candidate, okay? That's running for office. That's regulated by the district. You're also prohibited from filing as a candidate for election to a partisan political office. Um, that would mean if you are on this commission and you want to run for council, you would have to go ahead and resign from this commission before you, uh, took certain steps to be a candidate for, uh, uh, council. You are also, uh, prohibited from knowingly, um, directing or authorizing anyone else, um, that is subordinate to you to participate in election, in an election campaign or request a subordinate to make a political contribution. Um, so, uh, try to avoid engaging with your, also your fellow commissioners, but also the staff that work at CAH with regards to any partisan political activity. When engaging in any political activity, DC government employees cannot use their official authority or influence for the purpose of interfering with or affecting the results of an election. Um, so, you know, there, this could be very obvious, right? You wouldn't go on Facebook and say, as commissioner such and such, I think that, um, you know, candidate John Doe would be great for us. He's going to do great things in the arts. Um, that would be inappropriate, but it could also be much more subtle, right? You might be walking down the street and a reporter from the Washington Post asks you how you feel, um, about an election. But when they approach you, they approach you because you're a commissioner. They say, hey, Commissioner such and such, right? And so they are asking you for a statement in your capacity as a commissioner. And so you want to avoid making any, um, partisan political statements in, in a situation like that. All right, all DC government employees are prohibited from engaging in all political activity, regardless of whether it is regulated by the district while they're on duty. Um, and that includes when telecommuting or, um, on official time, if you, if you were union employees. But essentially what that means, like, right now, you are, um, executing your duties as commissioners. So you'd be prohibited from engaging in political activity, which would include posting, you know, um, or even liking or reposting partisan political, um, commentary on your social media platforms and stuff like that. You're also prohibited while in any room or building occupied and discharged of official duties in the district government, including any agency or instrumentality thereof. You're prohibited while wearing a uniform or official insignia identifying the office or a position, uh, your office or position. You're prohibited from doing it while using any vehicle owned or leased by the district, including an agency or instrumentality thereof. All right, let's do a quick quiz question. This is where we get a little bit more interactive to kind of see, um, how you guys are thinking about these, the information that I'm sharing. Um, Bob serves as the Chair of the Contract Appeals Board. During an official virtual meeting, Bob endorses his favorite Democratic candidate on record. Has he violated the Hatch Act? And you can go ahead and put, drop it in the chat whether you think Bob has violated the Local Hatch Act. All right, I'm seeing a couple of yeses. Yes, yes, yes. Anybody want to be a contrarian and say no? I'm seeing all yes so far. All right, let's go to the next slide. Yes, this was the easy one. Yes, Bob has violated the Hatch Act because he engaged in political activity while he was on duty. All right, on to our next subject. Let's talk a bit about financial disclosure. Um, uh, members of any two-E board and commission are considered public officials for purposes of filing financial disclosure. Um, the form is usually due on May fifteenth each year. The past two years, we have been extending that filing deadline, um, due to the global health crisis. Um, and I don't know what we're going to do in this next upcoming season, uh, but potentially we could end up reverting back to the standard May fifteenth date. That's the date that's in our statute. Um, so we would probably stick to that, um, to the extent that we could and it wasn't, uh, necessary to extend the deadline. Um, a person is considered a public official only if they held a position that made them a public official for more than thirty days within, um, a prior calendar year. So if you have any brand-new commissioners, um, I'm not quite sure on what basis you guys are, um, elected, appointed. Um, so, but if there's anybody that's new that has not, did not serve as a commissioner for thirty days in the previous calendar year, that person would not be required to file a financial disclosure in the upcoming season. They would be required to file, um, next year in the following season. You have to work thirty days in the previous calendar year in order for the financial disclosure, um, requirement to attach. Um, when do you file again? As I stated, May fifteenth, usually each year. Um, we will be in touch with you and send you a notice if we're going to extend the deadline, that the new deadline date will be in that notice. Um, it's also important to note that you're required to file your financial disclosure statement whether or not you have contact with our agency, right? And so oftentimes people, um, don't file and they may have forgotten and we may have notified them, but it went to their spam or maybe we did notify them. We made a mistake and they say, you know, I shouldn't have to pay a fine, um, because I didn't receive notice. And historically, we have considered that as a mitigating factor, but, um, we are not required to notify you, but you are required to file the form. Um, so there is a possibility that our board could say, no, you, you have been filing this every year. You knew about it. You know, you had ethics training and you were reminded about it and all those things. So the fact that you didn't get a notice is not going to persuade us and, um, you'd be, you, you'd be fined. Um, so just keep that in mind. Every year it happens on a regular basis. Um, and technically, whether or not we send that notice, you're still required to file. All right, we're going to go through the ten principles of ethical conduct. Um, if you all adhere to these ten principles, you most likely will not contravene the district's ethics rules. Um, and so we'll go over them and a couple of them have some more of those hypotheticals that we can talk about. All right, the first principle is public office is a public trust. Um, so you shouldn't use your title or position for personal gain, um, of yourself or others. Um, and we use this example for this slide because this actually really happened. So when calling Comcast to complain about a cable bill, don't say, do you know who I am and what I can do to you? And then identify yourself as a commissioner, right? Um, you should avoid identifying yourself as a commissioner in your personal email signature block, especially when you're handling your personal business and it has to do with, um, your bills and, you know, things that, contact that you're having with different businesses and entities and stuff like that. Um, you should avoid, uh, identifying yourself as a commissioner in your personal signature box. And later on in the presentation, I'll actually make note of the mayor's orders saying that all district government business should be done on district government emails. So if you don't have your district government email up and running, I encourage you to, um, get that up and running. And so this one is, you know, pretty clear. You are, um, you know, district government service, uh, servants and I've been hearing about the great work that you've been doing. Um, and the principle here is to keep your district government work, um, separate from your personal business and don't use your district government work to gain any, um, sort of advantage. Also, this last reminder at the bottom, fundraising for private nonprofit entities is usually your official title is prohibited. All right, principle number two, avoid gifts and payments from interested parties. It might be easier to remember if you just remember the word bribery because that's what it is, you know? Saying, you know, I took a gift from this person or, or that person, you know? We are, presumably the gift was given, you know, for a reason, you know, based on the circumstances. So you should, as a best practice and a general principle, avoid those kinds of things. Um, this means don't accept gifts from prohibited sources. A prohibited source is going to be a lobbyist, a vendor, contractor, developer, anybody regulated by the district or anybody who wants to do business with the district. All right. Um, here's another hypothetical and I'll read it and then you can give me your response. Felicia is a member of the CAH. Um, she's been invited to an opening night event by CAH grantee. May Felicia accept a free ticket to the event? You can go ahead and drop it in the chat whether you think Felicia can go to the event. All right, I see a no and a yes to start. I like it when there's mixed answers. Anybody else want to respond? All right. Couple of yeses. I think I got one no. All right. If the event is for funders, no tickets sold, yes. All right. Yes, as long as you have not asked for it. All right, let's move on to the next slide and see the answer. So the answer is maybe. Um, generally, board members may not accept gifts given by prohibited sources or because of their position and title. Um, it's very important to note, most people say, um, they, they may know the rule, but they know the broad strokes of the gift rules and they say, oh, I'm not accepting a, a gift from a prohibited source, but they forget that other piece and that is a gift that's given because of your position and title. Um, however, when a board member is invited to speak at an event, the board member's attendance is in the best interest of the agency or the board member is authorized by the agency's enabling statute to attend such events, the board member may accept free attendance at the event. Um, and so I wanted to go back to the chat because somebody said something interesting and I may, I wanted to make sure that I responded to it. And the comment was, if the event is for funders, no tickets sold, yes. And so I just wanted to make sure I spoke to that. Um, it's important to note that even though there are no tickets sold for an event, there may, the, the event may have some sort of market value. Um, and that's going to come into play if there's going to be some. And that's going to come into play if there's going to be some if there's going to be food and some sort of entertainment or something like that. It might be invite only, but it might the ticket might still have some sort of market value. And in which case that would make the invitation, you know, something of value, which will ultimately be give a gift, inappropriate gift if it's given by a prohibitive source or if it's given because of your position and title. Presumably, like in the hypothetical, we had a grantee that is certainly a prohibitive source. That is somebody that wants to, you know, keep the commission happy, I guess, so they can, you know, make sure they stay in good favor. There might be a whole, you know, review process and we're saying that we're doing this in a neutral manner. And and we can't be influenced, but we also want to make sure that there are other pieces in place and that we are treating everybody the same, which is kind of hard to say if we're accepting items from certain people. So I mean, in in you guys' case, I'm assuming that you attend events and you accept tickets to certain things. You want to make sure that your attendance is going to fall into one of these exceptions. Oftentimes, what the agency does is declare the district employees' attendance in the best interest of the agency. And there should be, to my knowledge, that is always done by the director of the agency and there should be some sort of written explanation, whether it be some sort of memo that's then, you know, memorialized and distributed or something like that. And so but you want to make sure that you are in one of these categories.
I know we said we would take questions at the end, but if you allow me chairman's privilege, that's why I answered no, because the safest answer here is no. And as Iran can tell you, I've sent many emails to her saying, I've been invited to this thing. Can I go to this thing? And the safest thing is to pay for your ticket yourself, but not to accept anything free.
Absolutely, and thank you for your comment. There you do have the option of paying for your market value for the ticket, which can get kind of mucky in the scenario that was brought up in the chat where it's invite only and there is no ticket price. But as you said, if you want to act out of an abundance of caution as a best practice, you should say no. And if you do want to go, you should you have to definitely make sure that you are squarely in one of these categories. You maybe have been asked to speak, in which case it's fine that you attend. Or your attendance must be in the best interest of the agency or it should be somewhere embodied in your enabling statute or enabling documents that you can attend this kind of event.
Please Gretchen, can you elaborate on best interest of the agency, please?
I'm sorry, are you speaking to me?
Oh, sorry, yes, I was.
Sorry, I'm I'm just I'm Agent Stuart Mitchell, that's why I got confused, I'm sorry. That is, this is a phrase that should be used when the director is making a determination if somebody should attend an event on behalf of the agency. And so, I mean, the basically the director would be providing some sort of rationale as to why the person's attendance, you know, to improve agency operations, to improve certain particular relationships, to advance the mission of the agency, something like that, to that effect. And this is something that should be put into writing.
Okay, Gretchen, again, this brings up a real bowl of hot wax here. We have panelists who are community members and I was looking at this, the comment that Quanise just wrote. And our community members are given tickets by lots of organizations all the time. But our community members are also our grants panelists. We can't tell every grants panelist, you can't accept an invitation as a community member for something.
So these rules are specifically, these apply to commissioners, who are special government employees. And so if you are a special government employee in the CAH commissioner, you do fall under our jurisdiction. And so you definitely are subject to these rules and have to follow them. So I'm not quite sure if you're saying that it's a separate person who just serves as a panelist, but otherwise is just a community member and not a commissioner?
That's correct, but the reason I brought that up is because it goes back to your conflict of interest. Many of our panelists rate our grants.
Right, so these rules are just for commissioners. If somebody, if this is community members that you're just otherwise coming into contact with and working with on panels, those people wouldn't be subject to these rules. Only the commissioners are subject to the rules because you serve as special government employees.
And it may be a fine point, but panelists don't determine the grants Gretchen. So they they can't give a grant, we can.
No, I'm aware.
They may have been on a panel with a grantee, they couldn't guarantee that that grantee would get a grant just by virtue of them having sat on the panel.
No, I agree with that, but.
We would not, we are we're not suggesting that a panelist that is not otherwise a government employee is subject to these rules.
So Chairman Emily?
Yes.
So just a question though, so just in the spirit of equity that we've talked a lot about, if you have members of the commission, there's there could be different people of different means that serve as volunteer commissioners. So they might not have the opportunity to experience theater because it can be expensive, right? So let's say the opera at the Kennedy Center or a ticket to a local preeminent theater. So there has to be some some mechanism that we can enable our commissioners to experience the art that they're helping to guide if they aren't, don't have the means to participate fully.
I I hear you, but it's unlikely that they would have been invited to come free if they were not a commissioner. So it's not as though we've impeded upon their ability to go to theater or participate. But in this case, they would have to find a way to buy an inexpensive or discount ticket to something as opposed to taking the free ticket. To me, it's.
I hear you, yeah.
To me, the rules are very clear, that's why I voted no. I may have been the only one voted no, because it's just too slippery slope and too confusing. I've already gone through that confusion. But Ms. Stuart Mitchell has given us some guidance and we certainly can refer to Iran as I've done many times at the moment that a particular opportunity comes forth. But if you're being invited because you're a commissioner, then already that is the conflict. And so, yes, you can attend, but you have to buy a ticket.
Question, suppose you're being invited and you're not a commissioner? I mean, as a commissioner, sorry, because you because you belong to something else, to another organization.
If you're being, you also have to remember that first piece. If you're being invited by a person or entity that is a prohibitive source in your work as a commissioner, you're also still going to want to avoid going.
helpful, thank you.
Excuse me, I have to get off in a few seconds, but I was able to stay long enough to hear this. I get invited to a lot of things and I doubt very seriously if any of them have to do with me being a commissioner. However, since I have become a commissioner, there's a little proliferation of being invited to a lot of theaters, I haven't taken advantage of them because, you know, just haven't had time. But I can say, that's hard for me to determine because they're not going to say I'm inviting you because you're a commissioner. I'm inviting you because you're, you know, done other things or you're somebody else. So that is a little bit more murky for me than it is maybe just an average everyday person who doesn't have all the all the drama going around in their life that I have. So how do I handle that?
So we encourage you all actually to, you know, reach out to us and ask us questions. You can ask us questions on a case by case basis. You can give us specific circumstances and we can provide you with feedback on whether we think a particular action that you want to take is ethical within the ethics rules. So call us up at any time if you want to ask us those kinds of things. There's going to be a lot of times where it's fairly clear cut, right? If you have a district government email address and the invitation is sent to your district government email address, that is, you know, that is being sent because of your position and title. They send it to your professional email address, right? Or it could be a different scenario of an organization that you have a longstanding relationship with that you had before you were a commissioner and you have some sort of personal relationship. And, you know, based on the circumstances, it's clear that it's not given by a prohibitive source or because of your position and title. And that that might be a little bit more clear cut. But in any, at any rate, if there is any level of confusion, you can reach out to us. And I'm going to, I'll put my email address in the chat, but we have contact information at the end of the the training.
Thank you, Mr. Stuart, I appreciate it.
Sure.
HR, a similar question, similar to what Cora said. In my case, I'm sorry, I'm Jose Alberto Uclis. I I have built community relation through years, like several of of our commissioners, through years of being a community activist. In my case, a big theater, I used to be a judge, big theater supporter. So a lot of my invitations to many different kinds of events come to my personal email and none of them are addressed as Commissioner Uclis. But it's people I have known or people I meet and and befriend. And I go support a small theater in Anacostia as I do the Kennedy Center. So in a small gallery event to a big gallery event. So that I think is helpful, what you said about if the invite comes to you or we. And I know Reggie through yourself building community has a lot of of acquaintances.
And just to clarify, that's not going to be, that's not like a bright line rule, right? Because it could come to your personal email, but it might still become from a prohibitive source. Somebody that does business with the district and wants to work with CAH or something like that, in which case you would still be prohibited. That's just an example of something, one fact that might tend to show that it's being given to you in your personal capacity. But if there are other facts that, you know, show that that person is a prohibitive source or they're giving it to you because of your position and title, then the fact that it came to your personal email, you know, can't be, it's not the only thing that would save you from violating the ethics rules. And so, I mean, essentially, there are certain certain times you can go. The rule says that if the gift is not being given by a prohibitive source because of your position and title, you can accept. If it is being given by a prohibitive source, but the agency declares that it's in the agency's best interest for you to attend, then you can go. If the in your enabling statute or your enabling documents, it says that commissioners are supposed to attend these particular kinds of events and we have no issue with that and we don't believe that that is a violation of the ethics rules. And if you're being invited directly to speak or present on behalf of CAH, then you can attend. And again, just call us up and we'll help you figure it out. All right, let's move on to principle number four. Avoid representational conflicts of interest. And so this basically means don't represent anyone against the district. And it's important to note here, if you'll see in red, and this is one of those rules where there are exceptions for you guys because you guys are considered special government employees, meaning you only serve for one hundred or one hundred and thirty days or less in the calendar year. And so this rule is narrow for you guys, where a regular rank and file district government employee would be prohibited from representing anyone against the entire district. They couldn't appear before any agency, they couldn't have appeared before any of the mayor's offices or council or anything like that. For you guys, it's narrowed and the rule only applies to CAH itself. That's going to, of course, apply to the commission and the sister agency. You're prohibited from appearing before CAH in a representative capacity for any outside or third party entity. And it's also important to note here that representation can take many forms. It's not essentially appearing at some sort of hearing on behalf of a third party. It could also be signing and submitting documents to CAH, attending a meeting with CAH, even if you don't speak at the meeting on behalf of the third party. All right, principle number five, avoid outside payment for government work. This is called salary supplementation and it also has a federal criminal counterpart for this rule. So I don't know if you guys get some sort of stipend or compensation for your service, but if you do, then that is the only compensation that you can accept for your CAH service. And if you don't get a stipend, thank you again for your service and I'm I'm sorry. Essentially, no one else can pay you for your district government service, right? If you were working with some sort of organization and they said, thank you so much for what you did for us. Thank you for your service, here is a $5,000 bonus for your work on this project. That would be salary supplementation and you'd be violating the ethics rules and also committing a crime. So it is important to to note that that if you if you don't get any compensation, I'm here to thank you for your thankless job, but you can't accept anything from any any outside parties.
We get amazing psychic income from this work. It's priceless.
Right, priceless. All right, principle number six, act impartially. This means you shouldn't give preferential treatment to your friends, neighbors or acquaintances, political donors, allies, family members, anyone really. You shouldn't give preferential treatment to anyone. You should execute your duties in an impartial manner. All right, we have another hypothetical question and I'll read it to you and then you guys can indicate your answer in the chat. John is a member of the ABC Board, which issues alcohol licenses to the district's bars and restaurants. The ABC Board only issues and renews licenses during a special licensing period. The owner of a restaurant approaches John and asks that her license be considered immediately outside the licensing period. John forwards the request to the Director of ABRA and asks if there's anything that can be done to get the restaurant owner her license. Has John acted impartially? And you can submit your answers in the chat if you think that John was executing his duties in an impartial manner. All right, I'm getting a couple of no's. I don't see any yes yet. All right. Okay, I'm getting all no's so far, no, yes, let's go to the next slide and see. All right, if you said no, you were correct. By asking the Director to deviate from the agency's standard procedures for a particular restaurant, John has given the impression that he is partial to that restaurant or that the restaurant should have preferential treatment. And so it's very important for us to execute our district government duties in an impartial manner. We don't, we should not try to deviate from the rules, policies and regulations put in place by enabling statute or by our agency. We should follow all of the procedures that are currently in place. And, you know, as commission members, we might have the power to, you know, vote and through a diplomatic process, change the processes and rules, but any rules and policies that are in place should be followed. And we shouldn't try to deviate from those. We shouldn't engage in any preferential treatment and give the impression that we ourselves or that the district prefers one entity, organization, company, contractor, vendor, lobbyist over another. All right, principle number seven, safeguard government resources. Don't misuse government property. Anything that costs the government money and you misuse that or abuse that item, that is a violation of the code of conduct that you have to keep in mind. Printer ink and toner, using that for personal matters, that's a violation. Improper appropriations expenditures, that is a violation. Use of the government credit card for personal matters with intent to pay back. I know oftentimes commissioners and board members, excuse me, don't have access to those key cards. But, you know, even instructing a staff member to engage in inappropriate purchases or appropriations expenditures could be a violation. And in that case, you've kind of roped somebody else in because they're probably going to have some issues as well. And I mentioned earlier that email policy, the mayor's order is in place that says that you must use official email account for all government business, not your private email. Please, 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 please establish your district government email account if you haven't already. It's important for several reasons, but one of the reasons that might stick with you the most is the the fact that if there is some sort of FOIA requests or some sort of requirement where the government is compelled to produce information and that information is contained in your personal email address, it might subject your personal email address to, you know, exposure. And your personal email address should just remain private and be for your private personal matters and be separate from your district government work. All right, principle number eight, safeguard confidential non-public information. Don't leak non-public information. This includes talking about your job on social media. If there are things that the commission is. If there are things that the commission is... Sorry, I just got a little message in the chat. If there are things that the commission is deliberating on, discussing, deciding, you shouldn't disclose those things. You should only, of course, as you know, if you go into some sort of executive or closed confidential session, there are certain things that you report out, and certain things that you wouldn't. So, I know you probably have it on your radar, what kinds of things are confidential, non-public, sensitive, that should not be shared. And you certainly should not share those kinds of things in order to get some sort of personal gain. You shouldn't do it at all, just by nature, if you're doing it, no matter your intent, is a violation. But you go into a more egregious realm of ethics violations if you're doing it to get money or something to that effect.
Ms. Stewart Mitchell, there's a question in the chat from Commissioner Torres. Hector, do you want to ask your question?
Yes, I would, thank you. I'm on the board of an organization, and as a matter of fact, joined another advisory board. And at least in one particular board that I'm in, I have had to go before, for example, council members to ask for support on issues of actually funding. And this is quite clearly, you know, an organization. I've done that as a personal, as a citizen. Obviously, I can't escape the fact that now I am a commissioner. But does that now, as commissioner, does that preclude me from being able to do this on behalf of another organization? And it's not, unfortunately, it is an arts-grantee partner currently, but at that time was not.
So, the district's ethics rules prohibit you from appearing before CAH in a representative capacity for any other third-party outside entity. It doesn't preclude you from going before council. However, there would be certain prohibitions if you're going before council. You would have to make sure that you keep your position and title as commissioner completely separate from what you're doing before the council and stress to the council the capacity that you are present in. And so, you are able to appear before other district entities because the rule against representation is narrow for special government employees. So, it's essentially because you only serve, you know, 130 days, and we know this is kind of essentially part-time work for you all. We don't want to hamstring you to the extent that you can't pursue your actual full-time work or your other worker interests, right? And so, the rule is narrow.
Full-time work is volunteer work, I mean, all of it is.
Whatever, whatever kind of work it is, so you are only prohibited from appearing before CAH. And that's the commission, your fellow commissioners and the agency itself. And representation would include submitting documents, appearing in any sort of hearing, meeting, or anything like that. All right. All right. Let's move on to the second-to-last principle. Disclose waste or illegal conduct by government officials to the appropriate authorities. And so, it's important to note that all district government employees, including special government employees, have an affirmative obligation to report to Bega and/or the Inspector General's Office any credible violations of the code of conduct. Failure to report itself is a violation. Your cooperation in our investigation is mandatory. Retaliation is a separate ethics violation. If you are being retaliated against because you have reported to our office or the IG's office, a person who is retaliating against you has violated the ethics rules, and we will definitely go after them full steam because we take retaliation very seriously. So, the main takeaway here is it's affirmative obligation. So, in the course of our investigation, if we find out that you had the whole kit and caboodle the whole time, you could have, you know, we could have avoided 30 days of investigation if we had talked to you, and you didn't report to us, and we couldn't contact you, you didn't reply to emails, all those things, that's a violation of the code of conduct. All right, our final principle. Abide by revolving door restrictions. And when we talk about revolving door restrictions, we're talking about the post-employment rules. There are some post-employment instructions about the kinds of things that you could work on when you left your district government service. You can go and work anywhere you want in the entire world. You can work for anybody that you want to work for when you leave district government service. However, there are some prohibitions with regards to projects, initiatives, contracts, whatever, that you worked on as a district government employee, special district government employee. And so, the restriction is around trying to work on particular matters that you worked on as a district government employee, but on the other side, on behalf of this third-party, right? Because the work that you did as a district government employee, it was to the benefit and for the interests of the district. So, you'd be prohibited from trying to go on the other side and work on that, and I guess essentially move forward the interests of some sort of third-party. And so, this is a very complicated area of the ethics rules. And so, we encourage you to reach out to us if you have post-employment questions. And we will give you very comprehensive post-employment advice based on, you know, the circumstances, based on what you did as a CH commissioner, and what you want to go on to do. And you are entitled to post-employment advice forever because we do have a permanent prohibition in the post-employment rules. There's a possibility that somebody could be permanently prohibited from working on a particular matter. You are entitled to post-employment advice forever. And that concludes the presentation. If you have any more questions, I'll take them at this time. You can unmute yourself, or you can put it in the chat.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, if I may, for Ms. Stewart. Ms. Stewart, you probably followed in the press recently, there's some question about grant-making and what we as commissioners know and don't know. So, I would welcome some guidance about the notion of us voting on grants in kind of large chunks with them, the organizations being blinded. If you could offer any perspective on that or any guidance, that would be most helpful.
Yeah, I wouldn't, it's kind of difficult for me to give guidance on a hypothetical, especially without being extremely educated on the processes and how they work. But what I will say is that if you contact us and give us a specific set of circumstances about something that has taken place or will take place, we can respond and give you comprehensive advice based specifically on those circumstances. I don't want to opine, right, on your processes and how you do things, but we can definitively say whether specific actions based on a particular set of circumstances have violated the ethics rules or will violate the ethics rules.
I have a question, can I ask a question? Some people wrote in the chat room, and I'm curious about your answer. What happens when commissioners, I understand about theater when tickets are a certain price, but what happens if you get invited to free parties at grantees, off places, museums, or theaters? And you know you're invited because you're a commissioner, but there's no fee involved?
Right, so, I mean, I would still say in that case, you'd have to be careful. It would depend on whether we could establish, if you were reported for attending this party, it would depend on if we could establish whether or not that party had some sort of market value or fell into the definition of a gift. In which case, you know that you would automatically have violated the ethics rules because, as you say, you're being invited because you are a commissioner.
That's right.
And so, what I would say is, as a best practice, I would decline to attend these events because even further than the gifts rule, there is also these rules that we must do our work impartially. And, you know, attending these different events and parties, you know, presumably, people are going to be there, you know, the press is going to cover it, Twitter is going to see it, and, you know, headlines, "Commissioner Loves, You Know, Artworks Incorporated." Look at them attending two of their, you know, parties and stuff like that. So, it's important to keep in mind that we have to remain impartial. Also, there is a rule, there is an ethics rule that says that the appearance of an ethics violation can be a violation of itself. And so, and it has a reasonable person standard in it. If a reasonable person, knowing the facts, would think that you violated the ethics rules, you could also face a violation. And so, I would discourage you from attending many of these events unless you have had a conversation with somebody in your agency that does ethics or had a conversation with us, and it is clear that your attendance falls into one of those exceptions, or it's not being, the free invite is not given by a prohibited source or because you're a commissioner.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? And we certainly will make note of your contact information because I'm sure many of us will have to call you about very specific situations.
Absolutely, and we encourage you guys to call us and just have a conversation. It's, we love doing advice and education so that we can minimize investigations and enforcement. And so, just talk to us beforehand. We are not here to tell you no. We are just here to tell you the rules and try to get you to a yes in an ethical way. So, just reach out and have a conversation with us about it.
There's one question that Commissioner Torres put in there. So, if you pay to attend a gala, and you buy a gala ticket, or you buy a table, is that prohibited?
You are in the clear if you pay for a ticket. The table thing gets complicated because you have to be careful to make sure that you're not violating any of the other ethics rules by purchasing a ticket for somebody else, so.
But if somebody else's aren't commissioners, anything like that, if it's just.
If they have nothing to do with the district government, you should be good, but you also have to keep in mind that they shouldn't be a prohibited source either.
It's complicated.
Right, but buying just a ticket for yourself, you're in the clear, you can attend.
This has been very instructful, thank you. And certainly, you probably raised more questions than you've answered, but that's okay.
That's okay, that's okay, because if people are thinking about it, that's a good thing. And you can contact us.
Any other questions or comments, but we have the broader agenda. Otherwise, I will move us to adjourn. Thank you, the next meeting of the commission will be held on Monday, December 20th. Time to be determined, but this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Chairman Ben Lee.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Bye-bye.
Thank you.